Open session, we'll call Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Ball?
Present.
Councilmember Starbuck?
Present.
Councilmember Cordova?
She'll be absent this evening.
Mayor Protem Victor Vega?
Here.
Mayor Janelle Osborne?
Here. We will now have invocation from Reverend Joy Price and then please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Good evening, let us pray. Great Creator, who brought the universe into being, we thank you for this day and this community of people. We ask that you give us your wisdom as we lead the city of Lompoc. We ask for your patience as we guide the people, your people, toward what is possible and away from what is not reasonable. As we approach the upcoming election day, let cool heads prevail, let hearts be generous, let our minds seek what is best for all and not for a small few. Whatever the outcome of this election, we know that you will work to bring about the justice that we require, you will work to bring about the civility that is required, and you will work to show us your example of love that we might truly learn how to love the other. Dear one, lift up these your leaders in this time of so many trials, COVID-19, crime, hatred, and poverty, and give them your shoulders to lean upon that they might lead wisely and with a steady hand. We pray that you would show us the way forward to a place of peace, justice, and harmony. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice. Report out from closed session, please.
Thank you, Mayor. The City Council met in closed session on two items tonight. The first item was a conference with legal counsel regarding significant exposure to litigation in one matter. The council had a discussion with staff on that matter, but no reportable action was taken. And second item, the City Council and the City Attorney, no other staff or any other persons, met in closed session to consider a public employee discipline dismissal release matter. And pursuant to Personnel Rule 15 of the Lompoc Personnel Rules, City Council voted four zero unanimously with Councilmember Cordova absent to affirm a hearing officer's recommendation and findings to terminate the employment of a City of Lompoc Police Corporal. That concludes the closed session report.
Thank you. We will now have a presentation of the donation to the Lompoc Public Library from the Lompoc District Libraries Foundation.
I'm Robin Small, the Treasurer, and this is Arlene Lewis, Vice President of the Library Foundation. And we're very pleased to present to the Lompoc District Library $155,250 to provide shelter for this poor bus that needs some protection from the elements when it's not going around and providing knowledge to the little kids. Thank you so much.
I just want to say thanks to the foundation and for everybody that has helped fundraise over the years for the bookmobile. This check will go towards building a library or the garage for the bookmobile, so we're really excited to have that. So, thank you very much.
Thank you very much for raising all those funds, ladies, and each and every donor. And if I could ask our library director to stay there, I will come down and meet you for proclamation regarding library card signup. So it's Library Card Signup Month, whereas a library card is the most essential school supply of all, and libraries and librarians play a crucial role in the education and development of children, and whereas libraries offer a variety of programs to stimulate an interest in reading and learning, and whereas libraries' resources serve students of all ages from early literacy to STEAM programs to research databases, and whereas signing up for a library card is the first step on the path towards academic achievement and lifelong learning, and a library card gives students the tools that foster success in the classroom and beyond, and whereas librarians create welcoming and inclusive spaces for students of all backgrounds to learn together and engage with one another, and whereas a library card empowers all people to pursue their dreams and explore new passions and interests, and whereas libraries are constantly transforming and expanding services to meet the evolving needs of their communities, now therefore be it resolved that I, Janelle Osborne, Mayor for the City of Lompoc, California, proclaim September Library Card Signup Month in Lompoc, California, and I encourage everyone to sign up for their own library card today. And I discovered I can't find mine, so I need to sign up again, so I will be stopping by to get my card. The library is near and dear to my heart. I spent every summer of my childhood in the library. It is what opened doors for me, and I travel the world through books, so thank you for the work you do, and this is absolutely something that opens doors for everyone, so congratulations.
There's nothing more empowering than a library card. Like the mayor, that is really what opened my world up when I was a kid as well. And today, with access to technology, media resources, and educational programs, libraries provide people of all ages the opportunity to pursue their dreams and passions. The spokesperson this year for the September's Library Card Signup Month is a 16-year-old teen author and entrepreneur named Marley Diaz, and she said that "A library card provides opportunity for discovery and access to a rich and diverse world. It empowers you to make change and experience new stories." Do you have a library card? Do your friends have library cards? This month, library users will have the chance to win some fun library swag by referring their friends to the library. Stop by the library with your current ID to get a library card and to check out books, DVDs, or use one of our computers. You can also sign up online for an internet card to stream movies, music, and books from the comfort of your own home. Thank you for supporting your local library, and we hope to see you soon.
The library offers so much more than it did when I was a child. I would like to invite Chief Walsh up for our proclamation on National Preparedness Month for September 2021. This is the fun part of the job. Whereas the United States Department of Homeland Security has designated September as National Preparedness Month across America, and whereas National Preparedness Month is an opportunity to raise awareness about the importance of emergency preparedness and to encourage all Americans to better prepare their homes and communities for emergencies, and whereas National Preparedness Month is also an opportunity to pay tribute to America's first responders who put themselves at risk for the safety of their fellow residents. These brave dispatchers, police officers, firefighters, and emergency medical service personnel exemplify the compassion and commitment that helps strengthen our community. And whereas in the event of any natural disaster, large-scale emergency, or terrorist attack, America's first line of defense is provided by first responders, including local dispatchers, law enforcement officers, firefighters, and emergency medical service professionals, who when properly trained and equipped and in unison with well-prepared individuals have the greatest potential to save lives and limit casualties after a disaster or terrorist attack. And whereas National Preparedness Month focuses on family emergency preparedness and encourages Americans to take simple steps to prepare for emergencies in their home, businesses, schools, and whereas the City of Lompoc encourages residents to make plans with and for their family members as to where to take shelter should a cascading event become imminent, and to make plans as to where to meet should family members become separated. And whereas the City of Lompoc recognizes the potential for events that could cause disruption of life-supporting services, residents are encouraged to develop Go-Kits with supplies to support each family member and pet for a 72-hour period. Now therefore I, Janelle Osborne, Mayor of the City of Lompoc, do hereby proclaim September 2021 as National Preparedness Month and encourage all residents and organizations to take action to become prepared for any disaster or emergency. Thank you for the work you do, and welcome again to our community.
Yes.
Mike is yours.
Thank you, Mayor. I think the most important thing that we can all recognize is that you all have the ability to help yourselves in the event of a disaster. And that means having a plan, having a kit, and having information, knowing how to get key information so, for example, you know when to evacuate your homes. Yesterday is a prime example. We had a wildland fire in Los Olivos next door around 2:30 yesterday, and residents were forced to evacuate their homes. And that's not the time to be thinking about, do I grab my dogs? Where's my wedding album? Where are my credit cards? Where's my marriage license? That's not the time to be doing that. The time to be doing that planning is now. And I was watching the news last week and saw a gentleman in a town, I think it was in Texas, and he was, it was a sheriff, and he was distraught about the time it was taking for FEMA to get there to deliver water. And how many times have we seen that on the news with towns surprised at the time it takes for power to get turned back on, for water to get delivered, and food to get delivered? And so we, all of us, public safety people and members of the community, have the ability right now to take some of that issue into our own hands and prepare ourselves and our families. And so in the lobby out there tonight, there's a lot of materials that will help you plan for your pets, for maybe elderly family members have special needs, family members who might have a disability have special needs in the planning, and there's a kit or a list of the supplies you might need. It's all out there, and it's all free, and so I would encourage you to go to ready.gov or to the county's website. They have some really great information. And take some action into your own hands and help your family before we have a disaster here. Thank you for this, and there's the materials there.
And I'm sure our librarian can have some available there as well. It's a good location to, again, to get resources. Thank you both for your service. City Manager, report.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. So tonight I have a few items. One of them I'm going to go off of because I need to get council approval in order to do it. There were recently two different Senate bills going through the works. One of them is actually on the governor's desk. That's the one I'm going to be talking to you about momentarily. The other one we did have on here, it was for SB 262. That's been pulled up at the state. They're doing some rework to it, so I don't, we're not going to talk about that one after all, even though it was listed here. But SB 9 is the housing development, and I'm just going to read you this letter that we're proposing to send off to the state and asking the governor to veto this bill because it has some pretty big implications, not just for Lompoc but for every city. I'm going to, I won't read the whole thing, but it's, "The City of Lompoc writes to express her opposition to SB 9," known as Atkins. "SB 9 would require cities and counties to ministerially approve without condition or discretion a housing development containing two residential units on an individual parcel in a single-family zone." So it's really, wasn't designed for that when we planned it all out. "Additionally, this measure would require local governments to ministerially approve an urban lot split, thus creating two independent lots that may be sold separately. Housing affordability and homelessness are among the most critical issues facing California cities. Affordably priced homes are out of reach of many people, and housing is not being built fast enough to meet the current or projected needs of people living in state. Cities lay the groundwork for housing production by planning and zoning new projects in their communities based on the extensive public input and engagement, state housing laws, and the needs of the building industry. While the City of Lompoc appreciates President Protem Atkins' desire to pursue a housing production proposal as currently drafted, SB 9 will not spur much-needed housing construction in a manner that supports local flexibility, decision-making, and community input. State-driven ministerial or by right housing approval processes fail to recognize the extensive public engagement associated with developing and adopting zoning ordinances and housing elements that are certified by the California Department of Housing and Community Development." So specifically to Lompoc, we've written some bullet points that concern the city. One, Lompoc is the most densely populated city on the entire Central Coast, far more than even beach cities. The current infrastructure of the city is not designed nor capable of handling the potential influx of such a heavy concentration of additional dwelling units in the currently developed areas, such that it's already built out, most of it, now we're going to go and try and put more into an area that was never designed or planned for that. The city has more than two decades, for more than two decades, has attempted to expand its borders via annexation, but the county and LAFCO refused to approve any annexations. These annexation requests would allow the city to build these critically needed housing units within the Lompoc Valley. This draconian type of mandate, which is unfunded, as most of them are, will cause additional harm to the City of Lompoc given its current population density. This has not directly addressed the true issue of lack of housing and is truly just a small, almost immaterial fix to the real issues which pertain to LAFCO." And goes on with a couple others, but it's just asking the council if they would approve this, this letter, it'd go out under the mayor's signature to send up to the governor along with many other cities, saying, "Nobody consulted the cities. Nobody asked us how this impacts. It's just, again, it's a very draconian, one-size-fits-all without looking at what it is." So if you're in agreement, I just need to get a majority of hands raised to put that out.
I support this letter. I, verbal. Oh, Councilmember Starbuck raised his hand, but I can't see my poor furrow. Councilmember Vega? You do. Councilmember Ball? So that is 401 with Councilmember.
We will have that printed and have it ready for your signature tomorrow.
No problem.
Couple more items. I'd like to, and I forgot to tell Dean this, so I'm surprising him at the moment. I'd like to take this time to recognize our Finance Department for the continued hard work that they provide to the city and its citizens. The city was once again awarded the GFOA's CAFRA Award, which is for outstanding financial reporting by the cities. And I do want to congratulate and give my best congratulations to all of his staff, but I'd like to take a moment and just see if Dean can come up and give a little bit on the background and how much work went into that, receive the award. Sorry for a lack of notice.
No, that's okay. On the spot's all right. No, I think it's an honor. We do do a lot of work. Kristi Donnelly is the lead person that took it over for me this year, so I'm real proud of the hard work that she did to get that award and keep it up. I encourage you as a council to look at the stats section. It gives you a lot more information. That's one of the major components required to get that GFOA award. We also do a lot of disclosure. We actually have more disclosure by getting that award, so you can see more comparables to other cities if they're doing the same thing. Gives you a lot more comparable, so, yeah, thank you, boss. Appreciate it.
It is, you know, having sat in Dean's chair, it's a lot of work. It takes a lot of time and effort by the whole staff, and I just, you know, it's commendable for what they've been doing, and it's getting better every year, every time you look at it. Two other items. One, this is another good one. The City of Lompoc has received grant funding to make streetscape, glasses keep fogging up, streetscape and transportation improvements along Highway 1 and 246 corridors, and is seeking the community's input on how these improvements would best be carried out. So we have a city webpage and Facebook page have been established for the Streetscape Multimodal Improvements Project, which includes a virtual project presentation recording, which is in both English and Spanish. The webpage is accessible and it's, if you go to our webpage, it's there, but I'll read it. It's www dot, all one word, citivooflompoc.com/streetscape. If you do go to the front page of our website, it's right there. You look under News and it has the Streetscape survey ready to be touched or clicked on. Community members are encouraged to first watch the presentation recording before participating in the survey, and if you have any questions, please contact our Planning Manager, Brian Halverson, at, and here's the number, 805-875-8228. And lastly, for those residents who will be voting in the current recall election, please remember to turn the ballot over as the city's cannabis initiative is on the back. They have so many filling the front, sometimes you might forget to flip it over because the question is on the back, too. So I just give that as a reminder to everybody that's voting. And that's all I had for the report.
Thank you. Any questions for the City Manager before we move on? Councilmember Ball?
I was just curious on the Streetscape grant potential. Is that substantial at all? Is that a, do you, any clue?
I'm going to turn around and ask our director here.
The grant is for the actual planning piece of it and to create the model and get the community's input on what they want to see in our streetscapes, but it kind of tees you up. You have the plan then to go on and apply for the next piece of it if we are poised and ready to do that.
Awesome. Thank you. I'm very curious and love to learn more.
Seeing no other questions, we'll move on, and I just saw our Chief of Police is here. I would have called you up for a Preparedness proclamation, but thank your division as well, so please don't hesitate to make sure they know that the proclamation was for all departments in public safety. We will move on to public comment on Consent Calendar. The number to call is 805-875-8201. Did we have any written communication on Consent Calendar?
No, ma'am, nothing.
Is there anyone in the room who would like to speak on Consent Calendar? You may welcome to come to the microphone. While we wait to see if there are any calls, I will read what Consent Calendar is. All items listed under Consent Calendar are considered to be routine and will be enacted after one motion in the form listed below. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless good cause is shown prior to the council vote. Any items withdrawn from Consent Calendar for separate discussion will be addressed immediately before the second oral communication near the end of the meeting. Seeing no one call in, we will close public comment on Consent Calendar and bring it back to council for approval or questions. Councilmember Starbuck?
Yeah, I'd like to pull item three.
All right, item three is pulled. Any other items? All right, seeing none, we will put item three after the second oral communication, and I will entertain a motion for the rest of Consent Calendar.
I'll make a motion.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
And a second. All right, let's vote. Going to vote. Victor. Victor, I need you to vote. Thank you. That passes 401, and we will discuss item three at the end of the meeting. Our next item is item number seven? No, wait, we have a staff presentation, sorry. It was the bottom of that page. Fire Chief Alicia Welch to present an update on the newly-delivered fire engine.
So, good evening again, Madam Mayor, councilors, clerk, council, city manager. I'm Alicia Welch. I'm the fire chief here in Lompoc, and I'm very grateful and appreciative to be the one who gets to tell you about the acceptance of the new fire truck. So I'll follow the arrow. This picture, this first picture tells you a lot about the, our new fire apparatus, and it really has a lot to do with safety. So this is the rear picture of our fire truck. You see the ladder? The ladder can safely take our firefighters to the top of the truck so that we can get tools and equipment from the top compartments. When I started in the fire service in 1990, we used to fold down little pegs, foot pegs, and climb up like we were untethered on monkey bars. The reflective striping, the canvas that covers the hose bed, that hose that's in there, each piece weighs about 90 pounds. So if one of those pieces of 50-foot hose comes out of that bed and hits a bystander, it's very dangerous. The LCD lighting, everything about this truck is more safe and efficient than the truck that we're currently in. Some of the other big reasons for new apparatus these days, firefighters and cancer. Today, our firefighters carry their turnout gear inside the cab with them, so driving to and from incidents. The gear that we wear at fires sits inside that compartment with them now. Over the years, a lot of research has been done, and we know that it's much safer to take that equipment and store it in outside compartments. So this compartment on the side, the door that you see open, is a firefighter's gear that now is not inside the cab with them, so it keeps all those toxins away from them. This also minimizes a big risk. Also, there's a lot of heavy gear that we use, the radios that we use, the helmets, the ax. All that gear that we use right now is floating around in the rear compartment where the firefighters sit. So if they slam on the brakes, all that, that gear is loose. So you can imagine carrying a load of firewood or heavy load from the hardware store, that that would put you at risk if you didn't have a secure load, and it puts our firefighters at risk, too. So the compartments are a big deal. The fact that the cab on this truck tilts, it gives very good access to all the components of the fire truck, the pump, the engine, all the plumbing is easily accessible. So not only are firefighters who do daily tests of the mechanics of the truck, it's also easier for the mechanics in the Fleet Division when they work at it, they have easy access to all the components, so it's easier and better for all of our people. They get better light, they can see problems that may arise in the technology easier when they can get the good light to see that. So this is a really big deal also. Now, another big thing about this truck is how we have brought down some of the, the features that we use. Firefighters use hose lines. So the firefighter on the left is Engineer Herrera. He's standing now at chest height, that's where the hose lines come out. Today, where they come out is above his head. So when we talk about, obviously, safety, if it's at his eye level or lower, it's safer for the hose to come down closer to the ground, but when we talk about diversity, equity, and inclusion, and we want a workforce that is short in stature, tall in stature, different strength capacities, bringing the equipment to compartments that is easier accessible is going to give us a chance to recruit people that we might not have ever recruited before. Another thing that's new on this truck is that compartment where Engineer Ochoa is standing in the blue sweatshirt. That compartment now comes down, and it covers all those levers and handles and gauges that today are all exposed to weather contaminants, and when that stuff gets in those parts, it causes problems. So this truck is now protected from that. Another big thing about this truck is the compartment size. If you look at those compartments in the back, how big they are, this gives us the ability, say, when we move oxygen bottles for our EMS or air bottles for fires, we can put those in the big compartments in the back, and they're not floating around in the compartment where the firefighters sit. So that's another safety feature. Another thing that you don't want happening, if your house is on fire, if your family's caught in a car wreck, you don't want us opening compartment doors and throwing out equipment trying to find something. This truck gives us the ability to safely store and identify all of our tools easily so that we can get on, get at them, and be much more efficient in our operations for the customers. This is just another look at kind of the, the suspension on this truck is very durable. These, this suspension is made for heavy fire apparatus and military vehicles, so it's made to safely transport the responders. It's also has a really tight turning radius, and when I show you a picture from the fire yesterday, you'll see that that turning radius can really matter to us sometimes. It stops better than our recent trucks do, and it, it has a good load capacity. So the fire on, the picture on the top here is a fire from yesterday, and this fire- And this fire is running along that fence line. If you can't see it, it's running along the fence line, and it's getting ready to cross the road and go to somebody's barn. This truck can pump while it's moving. In other words, the engineer can be driving it, and the firefighters can be walking along with the hose line and actually putting that fire out before it threatens that barn. The current trucks don't do that. Once you, you have to stop them, put them in gear, which stops the engine, and it puts that transition into pump, and then you can't move the truck. So this truck is a lot more versatile, which helps us protect structures in this type of environment, which we responded to yesterday. So it pumps and rolls. It has a backup camera, which you can see next to the steering wheel. One of the most dangerous things we do as firefighters is respond to incidents, is just trying to get there. And so this thing has airbags. It has seat harnesses that will hold the firefighters in their seats. It allows the driver to see what's going on behind him or her before he puts it in reverse. It gives them full visibility around that truck. So every feature about this truck provides better safety for not only us, but our customers that we serve. And our firefighters are appreciative. Some of these folks have never seen a new fire apparatus in their careers. It's going to make their lives easier. It's going to make them be able to do their jobs easier. But more importantly, it's going to provide them the opportunity to go home to their families, hopefully, without ever getting diagnosed with cancer. So we are appreciative for the work council put in, that staff put in, and the community put in to support this. And I can answer any questions.
Councilmember Starbuck?
Hi, Chief.
Hi, sir.
Quick question here. This truck, obviously, far better mechanically, et cetera, et cetera. Does this provide a longer depreciation? I, we don't have to purchase one as soon as our older trucks? Are we able to depreciate this longer and keep it in service?
No, sir, not necessarily. Our national standard tells us that fire engines have a lifespan of 20 years. That's what their lifespan is. And depending on the call volume in that district that they serve and how many apparatus they have in the fleet, we have a pretty high call volume in our district. And so if you put those miles on the rig, all that technology, all those mechanics, they're going to break down.
So the basic advantage to having all the newer, better stuff on here, then, is the actual maintenance cost on it, then?
Maintenance cost definitely is going to be an advantage. It's definitely going to be an advantage. But where we're going to see, I think, better use of our money is to have a rotation of our newer apparatus and our old apparatus. We haven't had a good rotation program here. And so what you have to do is probably every 2,000 to 3,000 miles, you need to take that thing and put it in the backup position and then roll the older trucks that have less miles. We haven't had that opportunity here. But you want to balance the miles on your fleet and the wear. Because from my last experience in my last job, we got a 2017 truck, and we put 60,000 miles on it in these couple of years, where had we would have rotated it every few months with our older fleet that had half the mileage on it, we would extend the life on that 2017 truck. But we didn't have a good rotation of the fleet. So there's a lot of factors that go into extending the, the cost of the truck. And replacement is one thing, daily, weekly, monthly maintenance, and then rotating the fleet and changing, bringing the backup rigs back in service to make sure those are properly being used and let these get serviced. We need to have a rotation plan also.
The warranty on this truck, you know, we have our planned maintenance that we have to do, but is it based on hours or miles?
You know that one? Hours or miles? I'll have to look at that one.
I'm sure the used truck people will be in touch with you about your warranty on it.
It really depends on the part. So the pump, so the water pump is normally on hours. Those are normally warranted on hours. The engine, all the moving, rolling parts, those are typically on miles. That's typical.
So you have apparatus and carriage-type maintenance, then?
Well, you could, you could put it that way. But the other thing that's distinctive about this is the pump, the pumping component that moves the water under pressure. Typically, those are warranted under hours. The, the truck and all of its components, the engine, the transmission, typically, those are mileage. But I would want to look at this contract and, and tell you what that is.
Thank you.
Councilmember Ball?
So I just want to say thank you for the presentation. I know you're just stepping into this role, and it hopefully is exciting that there's a new, new engine in the, in the bay. And hopefully, the folks that are, fine folks working at the fire department are excited and happy. I know we're still behind. We have a lot of catch-up to do. Something I thought would be interesting, and you put it out there, is that rotation plan, you know, trying to get as, as much longevity as we can with that type of rotation. Obviously, you'll be limited by the resources that you have that actually function and work. So I'm really hopeful that you'll keep us apprised of the condition of everything and educate us quite frequently about the catch-up that we still have left in the fire department. And I just wanted to give a shout-out for everyone that's short. Really resonated with me. I barely made it to 5'8". So I, just the fact that you said that shorter people might have a chance to be recruited, might have to look for another job eventually. But I'm just so happy for the city of Lompoke. I really appreciate our firefighters and the hard work that they do constantly, and to know that they've been driving around on really old dated vehicles for so long. This is the first step, and hopefully, many steps in the right direction. So thank you for that presentation.
Thank you.
And Mayor, if I may?
Yes.
So the chief and I were talking about doing the presentation, and I did say, can we do a little bit briefer? I didn't want to make it briefer, but I really want to do is when the shakedown period and the training is all over is to have the chief physically bring the truck up and then go through either this again or add some more to it, and then take a break if we can, and actually have people go out and, and see the actual truck in person. So that would be in another, another couple of weeks, you think, maybe, Chief?
Yeah, it's probably going to be, we talked about that today. It's probably at least three weeks. We were looking at the calendar, and we're kind of looking at the October, is it 5th, maybe, meeting? I think we were talking about the 5th. And that has to do with, so right now, it's at the shops for the mechanics to do all their regular maintenance checks after its long travel here from Wisconsin. So they're doing work. All those compartments have to be outfitted with the equipment. So those, all that equipment, like the jaws of life and the rotary saws and all that stuff is hung. Nozzles are hung and put in compartments so that we can open the doors and see it and access it. And then, because the suspension is different than the current trucks, obviously, they all, all the firefighters will go through a driving practice, and then the local dealer will also come here and do a pump training with them because that role in pump is very different than we currently use. And so the last thing we want to do is put it into service prematurely, not have everybody trained on it. A local department did that and wrecked it within a week. And so we don't want to do that. So we want to take our time, train, get everybody's skills up to speed, get the compartments right. And then we want to have a christening where you can break a bottle of something bubbly and appropriately follow fire tradition and roll it into the firehouse, and then put those folks out on the road in a safer piece of equipment. So it'll, it'll probably be in October.
I do think what was really amazing, so Dean and I went over there the first day it came in, and our 98 was, 1998 was sitting right next to it. It's, it's night and day. When you see what they have today and the things they've come up with versus what was there in 1998, it's pretty amazing how much thought went into creating a much better tool for the firefighters.
Yeah, and one thing that Dean noticed right away, which I thought was pretty intuitive, if you look at the windshield on the one on the, on the left, the new truck, there's no, there's no hazard there. There's no obstruction. In the, in the old truck on the right, there's a bar in between the two windshields. The windshield wipers sit up in the window, where in the new truck, they sit down below. So everything that they've done for this truck is, is to enhance safety, not only for us driving it, but for the person on the road that can see it better, makes it more visible, how we compartmentalize things, how we keep the toxins and the carcinogens outside of where the firefighters sit. Because they spend a lot of time in these rigs. And, and so sitting, it would be like you sitting in, in your garage, you know, wanting to eat dinner there with all the things that are collecting in your garage from that emissions, you know, getting turned on every day, turned on and off every day in your garage. There's stuff there, just like we've learned is in our firehouse. It's in our trucks, too. And so the setup of this truck is going to keep our folks safer and allow them to live longer so they can, you know, enjoy their retirements like hopefully all of our other city employees.
Thank you again to everyone's hard work on getting this approved and passed through, and we're excited. So whenever you're ready to break that bubbly, I'm right there for you.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. We go back to our agenda. We have oral communications on items not currently on the agenda. The number to call is 805-875-8201. And remember to mute your television, PC, or radio.
Deb Andrews, Mission Hills. I urge you to not comply with unconstitutional and health-averse mandates. According to Dr. Robert Young that gave witness testimony, all COVID mandates and requirements are a crime against humanity. True Science stated that no virus ever got isolated. Anti-COVID measures speak of a historically unique level of destruction. No study suggests masks protect from COVID. There's no isolated sample of COVID-19. In other words, no proof the virus exists. The tests used to test for COVID-19, the swabs from China, are sterilized with EO, ethylene oxide. Ethylene oxide is a carcinogen. It damages the DNA and reproductive toxicity. They are saturated with EO, and they are put deep into the nasal cavity close to the brain. Many consider Dr. Birx and Dr. Fauci as experts on COVID-19. And hopefully, everyone is aware that both have been arrested by the military. These crimes are being handled in the military code of justice. Dr. Birx and Dr. Fauci have both been charged with treason, 18 U.S. Code 2381, misprision of treason, U.S. Code 2382, seditious conspiracy, U.S. Code 2384, and crimes against humanity. I urge you to not comply.
Seeing no one call and no one rise for more oral communications, we will close oral, oh, come on up. If you're interested in speaking, please come forward.
Hi, my name's Justin Howen. I'm a 45-year resident of Lompoke, born in San Luis Obispo. I was just wondering, I think we should all get like an e-bike track going for electric bikes and stuff, maybe some tracks around the riverbed or something. They're, if you don't put off any carbon dioxide, pretty easy on the environment. We can have different classes of races and, or just, there's a lot of things going on. Bikes right now, there's a billion-dollar industry. In the next 10 years, it'll probably be a trillion-dollar industry. I'm in on the ground level of it right now. And I've got a mobile bike business and a prepare. And, and some monsters will show up with me today, but I guess they're not going to show up. They were talking, we're talking about building the e-bike police division, bike police division. They like to ride bikes. I talked to them yesterday about it, and they were interested, and they were supposed to show up, but I don't sit here, so maybe they forgot or something. And there's, there's going to be a little thing going on. It's just, right now, it's just on my heart, and that's what, what I've been told to do by my God, to go and create things as he has done. And I'm going to create things like I've been doing. I'm an e-bike fanatic. I build my own bikes now. I got many of them in projects and works. I have four of them out and building right now. One is out there, that's my Mad Max one. I've got, I'm having an alien division, alien series I'm going to make. I've got the Alien Lucian, and then I'm going to have the Mars Rover. And I've already made contact with Vandenberg Air Force Base over the Aliens about two or three weeks ago, about 3:00 in the morning. I rode out there, and they followed me out with military vehicles. I know about the Aliens. I know they're at Vandenberg. Personally, I've been in this town for my whole life. When I was younger, the whole town was different towns. Everybody's left and died. And there's only a few of us original left, and most of them are pretty much out of their mind because of the drug usage in this town and the drugs that are all over this town. And I'm a, I'm a recovering addict, I guess, but I'm not really an addict because I was able to quit what I wanted to. I quit meth six years ago, alcohol 12 years ago. And I'm just helping the community, and I'm, I'm a martyr of miracles, what I am. I should be studied by the world for the abilities that I have to change my life. Nobody else in the world can do it. I'm still being alive at 47. When the war on drugs took my mom and dad away from me, the Reagan War, I became a kid living on the streets when I was 11 years old, at 47. I've had so many of my friends commit suicide, murder, you know, just dead. They're gone. So that's why I say, I think we should put an e-bike track in town. It would help like with my kids, my grandkids that I have. And I have like five kids of my own. They're all over the age of 18 now. And it's the same with the community. It may be safe for the community. Kids could do it, adults can do it, and we could all get together, you know, and just ride around the riverbed and stuff, you know. Without any, like, it wouldn't be like the hot rods and stuff. It would just be like, you know, non-combustible engines. All right, thank you.
All right. Seeing no one else rise and no one calling in, we will now close oral communications and bring it back to the agenda. Item number seven is appointments. Reappointment of City Lompoke representative to the County Library Advisory Committee. And our library director, Sarah Blal, is at least going to give us reason to reappoint Alice. That's all right.
Apologies, my mind was elsewhere for a second. I'm like, wait, what? What am I doing? Thank you so much for considering the reappointment of Alice Down. She has been our representative for the city on the county's library advisory committee for the last 10 years. She's doing a great job. She would like to continue. It's very helpful for me and for the group altogether by having somebody who really is experienced and knows what we've been working on. Over the past couple of years with the county, we have been looking at different ways to fund the libraries for the entire county. And she has been part of different committees over the last couple of years, and I would like her to remain. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Sarah? Seeing none? Thank you. I appreciate the fact that Alice has already served 10 years and wants to continue. This is not an easy position, given you're advocating for our community with the county. So I really do appreciate that. I will entertain a motion. Councilmember Ball?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
And it's been moved and seconded to reappoint Alice. Any other questions? Seeing none, let's vote. And that passes four zero one. Did we have any written communications that have not been read in yet?
No, ma'am, nothing.
Thank you. We will have our final oral communications before we go back to item number three. You have two minutes to speak on items not on our agenda this evening. The number to call is 805-875-8201 for this oral communication. You have a maximum of two minutes. If there's anyone in the room who would like to speak, you are welcome to come to the microphone. to come to the microphone. Given the 30-second delay, we need to make sure the public is aware that the line is open and that they have a chance to call in. And unfortunately you still get to hear my lovely voice because if we stop talking, it stops recording for our city clerk. All right. Seeing no one call in and no one rise, we will close oral communications for our meeting and bring back item number three from consent calendar. Item number three is amendment to the city classification and compensation plans to affect new and revised classifications and salary range adjustments authorized in the fiscal year 2021 to 23 budget and adoption of resolution number 644621. And that was pulled by Councilmember Starbuck. Councilmember Starbuck.
Thank you. Just, I wanted to bring up a couple of things very quickly. I feel it's important that us up here and the citizens all know some of the things that happened. Compensation is done behind closed doors. It comes out. It's on consent. The last few meetings on consent, I've asked Mr. Albro several times, how much additional is that? What's it going to cost us? It goes right down the line. We started out with a plus 1.3 million on the budget. We received 500,000 in public benefit. What's our current standing now, Mr. Albro? What, what is our real general fund at now?
This one is, is, is just what we put in the budget book.
This one here, but I mean as a total overall, we were what, negative 600?
Yeah, I'm, I'm kind of losing track of where we are, but I know we passed, we had a, give me a second.
We don't have 1.3.
1.3 was the surplus.
Right. That's gone.
After all the time, all the stuff we spent, yes, we are, I had, I had to do the math in my head and catch up to you. Yes.
Yeah. So with raises, you know, cost of living allowances and all that, we have now gone into a negative number for all practical purposes. A big concern, you look at the fiscal health of California cities with the California State Auditor, and I've spent some time with this. Lompoc has maintained a moderate risk, a moderate risk, moderate risk. This time we are high risk. We went from number 19. Now there's roughly 450 cities in the state. We're 19 from the bottom last year. This year, we've done really good. Now we're 11 from the bottom. The health is based on several things. Our reserves, our capital, et cetera, et cetera. The only thing that we've excelled on is employee health, employee retirement People are going, where's our 1% sales tax? Well, one of the improvements that you have to make is a reserve fund. You have to pay off your pension obligation, et cetera. Now roughly a year into this, how much have we saved the city with the 15-year payoff? We, at one point, we're looking at what, 1.3 to 1.5 million savings annually, 20 million over the 15-year. We're still on track with that, correct?
Yes, we are. We've paid a year and three months, so we're about 13.7.
So basically a million plus a year that we're going to save on here. One of the things that happens is, is as a council, I don't think we catch it when we do these budgets. And that's why it's so important in January, we look back at this. When you look at page three or four on the resolution that we would have passed on the consent under section four, there's several add positions and several delete positions. I'm, I'm very curious. I'll take the top one on delete. We're going to lose an administrative aide for city administration. And these are random. I'm just going to throw them out. It was the top one down there. Suddenly, that becomes an executive assistant city administration. So that title is a pay increase.
Uh huh.
And a CPI increase on that one.
You've got to keep in mind when you look at some of those, like that one's approximately 75% allocated out, out of the general fund. About 25% of that is really paid out of the general fund. So it does have a small footprint to the general fund.
Yeah. Okay, well.
I think the bigger ones on there is elimination of the captain and add lieutenant.
I was going to say, we look down here, we delete one police captain and we add two police lieutenants. I understand there's reasons. There's mobility to go up. There's more administrative work. But what we didn't add on here, or you know what I mean, is we're, we're spending more for two lieutenants than one captain. So we're in a net of having to increase more revenue from the general fund to come in. Development assistance, you know, senior code enforcement, and now it's a neighborhood preservation.
That's all 100% general fund.
That's 100% general fund and a big bump in pay according to what was in here further back. I guess if I was to ask the question in math, we take these deletes and what they cost and then we take what we added and what they cost, how much more did just changing the names of these positions cost?
Well, the code enforcement was completely eliminated. So those are all complete adds. The same with the associate planner. Those are complete adds. The lieutenant is probably about 150.
Realize some of these were frozen positions.
They were eliminated in, in the 1921 budget cycle.
Right. And we've added them now with this, but the difference in, in compensation is roughly what, you know?
Oh, they're relatively close to what they were established in the old budget. I think you're absolutely right. You're making a really good point that we really need to be cognizant of the fact that our revenues grow only so fast and we can't outpace our revenues. And I think this budget is balanced. I know it was 600, when you come up to the, the deficit, but we do have about 600 in capital improvement. So there are one-time anomalies that we're spending. And also keep in mind that when I set this budget up, I, I didn't set it up with held positions. I didn't help, I didn't set it up with projected vacancy savings. I fully funded everything.
No, I understand. I hate to put you on this position, Dean. It was just one that I'd sat and looked at and I stewed over for a long time. And, you know, the fiscal health of the city, 450 cities, and we're the 11th from the bottom.
Well, actually it's worse than that. If you look at our general fund reserves, we are dead last.
Yeah. Well, there's several, several points on this. You know, debt burden, liquidity, revenue trends, pension obligation, funding, pension costs, future pension costs, the OPED, the employee retired health, which we excel at. So, you know, when you take all of these and you come up with the compensation factor of, of it, yeah, you're right. We're dead last in, in general fund, you know, revenues or reserves, but.
But that, we're going to turn that around. I know we're going to see a surplus in this budget. Like I said, I fully funded every single position. We're still seeing about 23 to 22 vacancies. We were at 26, 27. So we are filling positions. We have better services, but we're still going to see a saving because we're still not being able to fill them all.
Right. And realizing that this is usually a year behind also, you know, when you'd have to go and do your CAFRA and all that reporting. So with the addition of refunding our pension liability, we should move up substantially in here in these rankings as far as pension obligations.
There's a lot of things that I'll be bringing back to you and doing an update. November, I'll talk about the ARPA. February, as you requested, I'll talk about the budget and, and its totality. And I think you're going to be happy with what you see. We will no longer be at that ranking.
No, I, I just feel it's important to, you know, I can't go out and speak to the council as a whole about that, but to let them know, you know, to let citizens know that, yeah, we look really bad right now, but.
And I appreciate it because.
The reason that that sales tax was put in and what the decisions that were made on it were to do nothing more than to do the betterment of the city and to secure the retirement of the employees in it. So, you know, thank you, Dean.
And I appreciate it because this is, to me, very important. I watched the city hit and I, I'm going to, I'm, I know the city's going to rebound and we're going to, there's a lot of things that you're going to, you're going to be very happy with what you see.
I look forward to January.
Right on.
Thank you, Mr. Albro.
Councilmember Ball.
So I appreciate those comments. I have a slightly different viewpoint that I'd like to share. And Dean, if you are available, I might have a question for you, just so I don't put my foot in my mouth. But let's go back in history a little bit. The term was put out tonight, outpacing revenue, outpacing revenue. We passed a sales tax, March 3rd of last year, 2020, measure I. The first time a sales tax was introduced to the council as an idea to help us build revenue, to maintain and to, to keep up with our neighbors, it was 2015. The majority at that time, leadership decided, no, not going to even entertain the idea of a sales tax. And the excuse was because we don't want to use that to balance the budget. And that's fine. But I would just like to submit that, and correct me if I'm wrong, if we had found the will to pass a reasonable sales tax in '16, do, what, do you think we would be 19th place or 11th place or last place in terms of our reserves and the health of our city?
No, matter of fact, if you would have passed it in '08 and '07 when the recession hit, that would have been the optimal time when we had very little debt that blew out of control. Yeah, there's, there's cities that actually did that. They knew this was coming and they actually, the first thing they did is pass a tax in, in '08 and '09.
So my point here is not that taxes save everything, but we have to be real. The cost of living, the cost of paying for services, the cost of your milk and your gas, all of that has gone up over 10 years, 20 years. Everyone knows that. We cannot, as leaders, continue to sit up here and say, you know, they just keep making too much. Our employees at the city, we have close to 245 employees represented by labor here, and they're still at the bottom of the bucket when you compare them to a lot of our neighbors. So my point is not to get in the fight about history. I, this council has caught up. They all got behind measure I in 2020, got that passed. And I'd like to think that that saved our bacon in a lot of ways, bringing in an extra $5 million a year. I only lament that we did not have the benefit of that $4 or $5 million a year for an extra four years because I think we'd be sitting here with a much different outlook. But I think we're headed in the right direction and we can catch up. And we need smart people like you to make sure we, we keep track of that.
You know, just that you make, you bring up a good point and if I could add to it, if I, if I could. You know, to me, when I look at the resources, to me, they're service levels. And as you as the committee, do you want to keep those service levels? What was happening is our, our revenues were going below our service levels that we wanted to spend was too high. So at that point in time, we had either cut or move forward with something to keep those service levels.
Thank you.
Any more questions for staff? Councilmember Starbuck?
I'll move that we accept item three on the consent calendar.
All right. I need a second.
I'll second.
And we have a second. Any other questions? Seeing none, let's vote. And that passes 401. All right. Final round of discussion is council comments and meeting reports. Councilmember Vega.
Nothing to report.
Thank you. Councilmember Ball.
Just want to say another thank you and a shout out to all of those that worked their butts off here for the city of Lompoc. And I hope you all had a wonderful and safe Labor Day yesterday.
Councilmember Starbuck.
I have no reports.
Thank you. I attended several meetings on behalf of the city. And one more reminder, remember to vote on 9/14 and to turn your ballot over for measure Q. We will adjourn our meeting for the Lompoc City Council to the next regular meeting at 6:30 PM on September 21st, 2020.